Well, being here, because we're just, just broke into quorum, so here we go. Pursuant to the provision of section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davison County, or the Circuit Court of Davison County, this estatutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Some added clarification of a preservation permit. If you are approved for a preservation permit today, and you're not the contractor, please know that it is your responsibility to make sure that the contractor has a copy of the preservation permit before beginning work. The preservation permit includes items that require, that require final approval and inspection requirements. The approved drawings are part of the preservation permit. Following the preservation permit will save you time and money, as enforcement of violations can sometimes be a lengthy and expensive process. The preservation permit is separate and not a building permit. No work can begin without the appropriate review and approval by the Metropolitan Department of Codes Administration. And also those in the audience today, if you are the applicant, please identify yourself and your connection to the project, like if you were the owner or the architect or contractor. Also, when public hearing is open and you want to speak specific to the project, please identify yourself as well. And the podium is there, and just make sure that that light is on red. Okay, our first thing on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and Ms. Ziegler?
Yes, so we have a request to remove 2901 Belmont from consent, so if you agree to that change, it'll be heard at the end of the meeting. 1208 Shelton is a request to defer, and then the follow applications have been withdrawn, 2910 Belmont, 122 South 12th Street, and 1706 Eastland Avenue is a request to defer to the January meeting.
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
Yes, so that's items eight off of consent for 2901 Belmont, and then items nine, 15, 16, and 17 will not be heard today. Number nine is 28, 1208 Shelton, which is a request to defer. Fifteen is 2910 Belmont, withdrawn. Sixteen is 122 South 12th Street, withdrawn, and seventeen is 1706 Eastland, request to defer.
Thank you. With those changes to the agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve with the changes.
Okay, second, first by Commissioner Cotton, and seconded by Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing, and none opposed, that motion passes. Number two on the agenda is adoption of the November 14 and November 20, 20 to 24 minutes.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Cotton, seconded by Commissioner Cashin. All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none opposed, that motion passes. Also, do we have any council members present at the moment? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda.
As notice to the public, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items, unless a member of the audience or commission requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. We will read each case out, one by one, and if you are in opposition to the project, please raise your hand when we call out the case you want heard. Items removed from the consent agenda will be heard at the end of the agenda. So if you see an item listed here and you want it to be pulled from the consent agenda to be heard in a public hearing, please raise your hand after I call it. 108 Evander Street. 1007 Montrose. 2406 Sunset Place. And 2901 Belmont has already been pulled from consent, so yes, we got that, thank you. So staff recommends approval of the consent agenda with the conditions in each of the staff recommendations.
Thank you, Melissa. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Commissioner, Commissioner Williams has made the motion, and seconded by Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none opposed, that motion passes.
This is a brief reminder about the presentation and hearing process for the Historic Zoning Commission. First, the staff will present a summary of the project and its recommendation. Then the applicant, including all members of their team, may present for up to 10 minutes. The applicant may save two of this 10-minute period for rebuttal of public comment, if there is public comment. After the applicant presents, the public comment time begins, and each member of the public has up to two minutes to speak, although groups such as neighborhood groups may speak for five minutes if they have asked to do so prior to the meeting. The commission may ask follow-up questions of any presenter or member of the public at the end of their presentation or comment, as well as during its own deliberations if they reopen public hearing, and the response time for these questions does not count against time allotments. Once public hearing is closed, applicants and members of the public cannot initiate exchanges during the deliberation period without an invitation from the commission to speak.
Thank you, Legal, appreciate that. Okay, first, the next on the agenda is Inglewood Place Design Guidelines Revision.
Yes, and this is a request from Councilmember Benedict to revise the Inglewood chapter of the Consolidated Guidelines, so that's in Part Two. And what I've given you is the existing Part Two, but also with this new language added, so you can see what it would look like. And you can see there's one little section here on the screen that's underlined, that's not in your staff report, that's some extra language we recommend, just to make it clear. So this is, I think you're all familiar with this, but this is a request to change the review of siding, which you currently do, historic siding, so that the removal of historic siding is not reviewed, but if it is removed, whatever goes back in its place would be reviewed. So that's the request.
Okay. Question to Legal on procedure, since Councilmember Benedict is not here, do we still do open public hearing?
Yes, you should have a public hearing.
Okay, so, so Robin explained, so now we will open public hearing, okay? Anyone here to speak on this project? Okay, we will close public hearing and go from there. I, as chair, I just wanted to give a couple of comments to begin with. I know that we have a few new commissioners, so that haven't been through this process yet, so this is sort of a newbie kind of presentation. Also, half of our commission is not here, so just to keep that in mind. And then also, so the question to Robin, first of all, because it is a significant change to design guidelines, so we want to be sure that we understand the process and to be sure that we are really being diligent on how this change will affect the neighborhood. So I'm going to ask Robin to talk through the process with us first.
So this is just a change to the design guidelines, it's not a, a change to the ordinance or the boundaries or anything like that. So you are the last decision maker on guidelines, the final decision maker, it doesn't go to council like the establishment of the overlay did. So whatever decision you make today will, will be the end of the line. Did I answer everything you wanted me to?
We might ask some more, but I think that's a good preliminary.
I have a question.
Okay?
I have a question.
We're in discussion anyway, so.
To Robin, so these are, is Inglewood Place part of the Consolidated Guidelines?
That's right, and so what you have in front of you is, is a piece of their specific chapter.
Okay. So this would differentiate them from other?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I have a question too, actually I have a couple of questions, and I may have more. But my first question is, have we ever had a situation where we have just pulled one single requirement out of the guidelines? Because it looks like what we're dealing with here is just siding. Have we ever done that before?
I don't think there's been just one issue, and certainly we've revised the guidelines before, and will continue to do so in the future, but I don't recall where there's just one little thing that was changed.
Okay. So in some ways, this is setting a precedent, if we do, for just parsing one piece out, maybe?
I wouldn't say it's setting a precedent.
But this is out of the norm of something that we would usually do.
Yes.
I have another question too, and this kind of rumbled through my brain while I was reading this, and I don't know the answer, I hope some of you all do. Would this affect, say you do have a house in this, in this district, would it be of, would it diminish the value of this historic house if they did have historic siding and they remove it? Wouldn't that diminish the value of the house?
There's so many things that go into valuing real estate.
I mean, I know that's kind of an answer, but you know, if you have a new car and you wreck it, it has diminished value. So if you have a historic home with historic features and you remove part of it, would it?
I think it'd probably depend on the buyer. I, I mean, that is part of the, the appeal of these historic overlays to residents and to owners and to buyers, is that it has historic character.
And to protect that.
Right.
Yes, to protect it, so.
And this was a normal process where the neighborhood decided they wanted this overlay, they wanted the guidelines, and now, possibly as a result of one person being unhappy with a result, we're changing the entire guideline. That's what it looks like, from the cheap seats, maybe.
I'm, I'm going to tail in on that one. You know, reading again the recommendation, out of, how many is under the overlay? 500 homes?
It was around 560, I believe.
Okay, so under 500 homes in the neighborhood, again, we're not hearing from the Neighborhood Association on this, is, there were 50 people attending the, the meeting. That is a small percentage of the neighborhood. Also, on the recommendation, there was, and, and those were per-person votes, not a household, so that's not per-property. So I caution us in terms of how this change would affect the other, you know, 500 or so, that maybe didn't go to the meeting, or didn't hear the reasons why. I think Robin also clarified with me, us, that there's, this percentage, like 15% of the homes would be affected, is that correct?
That's right, and just to clarify on the 50, 50 people attended the meeting, but we don't know, you know, at that point, it was just a discussion, we don't know what 50 people thought. But then she conducted a vote, she sent out a postcard, Councilmember Benedict, which is also a little bit unusual, you usually don't have a vote on guidelines, and 41 people responded.
I, I may be asking a question that was already stated, but just to clarify, we have not heard from the Neighborhood Association, is that correct?
I've heard of, heard from members of the Neighborhood Association, no one specifically said that they were representing the association.
No formal, no formal.
Nothing formal, just conversations.
Just conversations.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to throw out some more stuff for you all to think about, because I've thought about this too. So when you look at the languaging that's going to be changed on their specific design guidelines for Inglewood, you know, when you have an applicant that reads a guideline, as a commission, we want to be sure it's crystal clear on what the direction should be, right? The other thing that I'm cautioned about also is the process, and it's how, I, I can't quite grasp the idea, or the theory, of not reviewing a cladding, not reviewing a cladding, and then but yet have to come back to staff to recommend to the commission the replacement. To me, that's a, that's a two-step that's together. That's not a one-step to say, you can take everything down, but then you're going to have to come back. So what if an applicant, and I'm, I'm looking at processes, because as you know, what has come before this commission is violations and show cause, and we want to diminish that as much as we can on the get-go, for contractors, for applicants, for owners. I, again, let's take a scenario. If, if I take, and I say, okay, I look, I look at this new languaging, and I remove a non-historical, or not a, whatever the language is, let me, let me, let me say this, because the language says only historic cladding of brick and stone shall be retained and not covered with a different material. Are we clear? So if you read that as an applicant, are you clear? If you do that and go, oh, I've got permission now to take things down without review, can you slip up and say, I'm going to put whatever I want to replace? And then it's going to come back to the commission and go, it's a violation, it's a, it's a show cause. Just think about it. Because again, processing is real important to where, how our staff navigates the design guidelines to an overlay. So I don't want to get confused on that, but to me, I'm not real clear to say those are two separate actions that can mess things up. Think about it, I'd like to hear some more comments.
There, there's something about it that troubles me as well, because if you, if you have been given a license to remove it, how far do you go?
They weren't given a license.
Well, but it, I mean, if they were given permission, or whatever in the guidelines, to remove the siding, how far do they go with that? Is it, you know, is there a stopping point to that?
And I think you brought up a good, a good thing too, is to say, if it's historic, and what if that removal compromises the historic structure? That, so staff is not going to be able to look at that to say, we need to shore that up, that historic siding or cladding is good or not good? Again, our design guidelines are pretty good about saying, this is what we're doing, is we're, we're preserving historical structures, that's our purview.
Well, and to add on to what you're, you're trying to thought, Commissioner Bell, if, like one goal through the Consolidated Guidelines was to make it easier on everyone, staff, us, builders, owners, so that things were more even and understandable across the board for everyone. If we start parsing out in every single historic district, little, you know, little items of, well, in this district, you don't have to do this, well, in this overlay, you don't have to do this, in this overlay, you don't have to do this, that seems to go against the purpose of trying to make these more understandable for everyone. And I think, you know, we often hear, we've heard from, from homeowners, from builders, from contractors, well, you know, when we did it over here, it was this way, now we're doing it over here, it's this way, and by creating these consolidated guidelines that they worked so hard on, we're trying to minimize that. If we start parsing out exceptions, it just seems counter to all that, to me.
Okay, duly noted.
I agree, I think it makes it a little bit more confusing, instead of, instead of easier, it makes it harder. I mean, from, from my initial reading of this.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I appreciate everyone's comments. I may be in the minority on this one, I, I kind of saw it as a fairly minor rule change, maybe had not thought to larger issues. I guess just having heard of it, or heard some of the discussion, I think, I think if the cladding or siding is, compromises the structure, you, your house is in some deep trouble. I, I don't, I don't really exactly share that concern, and as far as value, I think that's an interesting question, but it's just not what we do here. I mean, there are lots of things we do that hurt value, because that's not our charge. I guess my question is, how much autonomy do we give the overlays? I know when we institute them, I don't know this, I believe when we institute them, we reach out to the neighborhood, it, it sort of has to be asked to be included, or that was my understanding, and you can even ask to be, you know, not included on the same block when it's established. I guess then, once it's established, do we give some amount of autonomy, or at least input into their own rules? Because it, it seems like they had a neighborhood meeting, they had a vote, or not, councilmembers proposing it, I see no reason to reject their wishes. I do think it probably does make it more complicated, but everything we do here is complicated. I mean, that, just by being in a historic overlay, you've got two sets inspections, which people have a lot of trouble with. And I'm not sure it'll lead to more, I, I don't think removing a cause for violation will lead to more violations. But I've been wrong plenty before. So I guess that's my question, is do we normally allow some measure of, if not autonomy, input or whatnot in changes to the individual overlays? This is a rookie question.
Yes, the neighborhoods involved in the creation of the guidelines, every district that's part of the Consolidated has its own chapter, and many of them, not all of them, have some extra guidelines, because their specific character is a little bit different, and so there's different elements that are in there for them. Then if they want to revise them, it's usually much more involved than this one, you know, you have multiple community meetings, sometimes there's a committee that works with staff, it's, it's a lot more involved. We don't usually take a vote, and we usually don't do things with such a small percentage of involvement than we have here. And I respectfully do disagree with you on it causing structural issues, because we've seen it happen so much, which was why, when the Consolidated Guidelines were created, we input in there that we would need to review historic siding. Because if in a consolidated, in a neighborhood conservation, you can remove the siding, the casings around windows and doors, the windows and doors themselves, and the roofing material, there's really nothing left, and there have been times, multiple times, where the house has fallen down. And so someone had said, we're not sure that this is a perfect fit for the goal of preservation, certainly if that means the house is going to fall down. Now, when someone's doing an addition and their material isn't historic, or it is historic but is in terrible condition, and we know that the approval will be to remove it, that does give us that opportunity to say, we should have shoring as well, so that that kind of thing doesn't happen. Since we're not reviewing it on the front end, we won't really have that opportunity.
Interesting, that's, that is good to know. I think I would, I, 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 I agree with you, I think if the cladding is, is structural, your building's in a whole lot of trouble. I mean, I, it's not meant to be. So if that's what's holding it up, it needs a lot more work than cladding. I hear you. Well, I guess, having, having not done enough homework on this one, just kind of reading through, so why is staff recommending approval? Sounds like I'm the only one who is going to vote to recommend that, and it sounds like you, you, you are not a big fan of the change, so what, what is the argument for it? I mean, I see it as a minor change, it seems like it's affecting 10% of the overlay, gives more, gives more freedom to the residents, which is not, I guess, kind of like value or concern normally, but is, is sometimes where my sympathy lie. So what, what is the reason for the recommendation?
We felt like either direction would meet the Secretary of Interior standards, but there are concerns, and we chatted this afternoon and added some language that as I sit here and look at it, I'm not sure it's, if it doesn't cause additional confusion, so it may be an option to defer, so that we can tweak the language a little more and make sure that it is clear, and bring it back to you for further discussion. It's just an option.
I think that makes a lot of sense, I also wouldn't mind, and extremely busy, especially this time of year, but I'd love if, if the councilmember could write us an email, you know, if not, and, and, just because I, I am inclined to, to vote that way, but it seems like I'm in the minority, and, and if there's a good case for it, I, I think that should be, that should be heard, because I'm not sure I'm making it. But I think that's all I got.
But your opinion is important, so we do want to hear commissioners, Commissioner Williams? Your mic, sir?
You weren't in the minority, because I was thinking along the same lines. Staff answered a bunch of my, the questions I had in terms of the process, and how did we get here? I think in your initial statement, you said we were the last line, so I was like, okay, well, how did get, this get here? Where did it initiate, where, who approved it before it got to us?
It's just a recommendation, not an approval.
Okay.
Let, let's be real clear about that, because you know, we've, we have been, sometimes said, oh, you, you know, rubber stamp, or, you know, because of what the staff will recommend. Staff will recommend, however, it is the commission to make the decision, just to be real clear.
And it, and the request comes from the Councilmember Benedict, staff is not requesting a revision.
Okay. That said, I was compelled by my fellow commissioners' concerns in terms of the small numbers and the overall impact it could have. My greatest concern was whether or not it lined up with the Secretary of Interior's standards, and I'm assuming that because it is here before us, that you guys have looked over it, and it did. But that said, after hearing all that I'm heard, I, I think I'm going to vote with the majority in this case.
I'm also cautioned to say, because we have four other commissioners that are, are not here, and to make a decision like that without having shared opinions, I would rather recommend that we do defer it, so that staff can work with Legal on a more succinct languaging of this addition. That's number one, the other, again, well, number two, because not our commission is here, and also making clear languaging, because we, a lot of times, you know, languaging is so important, the way it is, in terms of our black and white, per se, but I, I would rather just see us be, take a breath about it, take a pause, make sure we are making the right decision. I think also when we say that it is just the Inglewood overlay, maybe there's others, other overlay that will hear it and go, hmm, let's, let's see how we can change that. Again, I think Commissioner Cotton has said, consistency to the Consolidated Guidelines is, was thought through very well with many different overlays that are, out of our third- with many different overlays that are, out of our 30 overlays that have really given input. I'm just, I know it sounds small, Commissioner Smith. But I also think that when you look at recommendations and to see the mechanics of how this works, and that's how I think, is that, okay, you remove, how far will you remove? And I'll, I'll say, oh, well, I'm going to ask forgiveness later. Maybe it's a small percentage, but guess what? It's going to come before us. And it's going to, and it's going to, it's going to give us, you know, a lot of angst about it. I don't, we don't want that. And also, you know, the implementation, again, and the mechanics to the department and how that is. And again, our preservation purview is for historic structures. So I would recommend that we defer this until January, until some clarity comes more. Maybe you might have another opinion, you know, in January. And that's okay. That's okay. This is why our commission deliberates. So with that said, do you have any comments on deferral? And legal, do we need to vote on the deferral?
Yeah, you need to have a motion, a second.
Okay. Somebody needs to, to put, put the motion on the table and second it and then all, okay? So I invite a commissioner to make that motion.
Madam Chair, with respect to Inglewood Place Design Guideline Revision, I move that we defer this decision until our January meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Cashin has put a motion down. Okay. And Commissioner Williams has seconded it. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. So we have three that are four. One is nay. I break, I break it, so I am going to go with yes, we defer. So that is one, two, three, four in deferral and one in opposed for the deferral. Duly noted?
And just for anyone listening, that's January 15th at 2:00 PM.
Okay. We did make the motion, right? We're good. All right. Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I think we've done our job today. Okay.
Ready for the next? All right. The next case is 930 McFerrin Avenue. So the commission approved a preliminary SP for 930 McFerrin Avenue in May 2022. And council approved that SP, SP in September of that same year. The commission approved a final SP in April 2023. So as approved, the SP is, is comprised of two parcels. 930 McFerrin Avenue, which includes kind of the, the deep sort of portion between West Eastland Avenue and Seymour, as well as 907 West Eastland Avenue. So this request is to amend the SP to incorporate 905 West Eastland Avenue to this SP. Just some background on procedure, since it is a request to amend an SP, since the boundary of the SP is proposed to expand, an amended SP must go back to Metro Council for approval. So when considering proposed infill for a property that also has a rezoning application pending, such as this SP, the commission first reviews a project's massing forms setbacks in orientation before the planning commission, before it goes to the planning commission, and then finally to Metro Council for approval. So if this goes through that, the amendment's approved, this project would come before you, after approved by council for review of materials, finistration, utilities, and any other details. So this lot at 905 West Eastland, there is a structure. It was constructed circa 1958. Due to the, the date of construction, as well as the, the details of the building, it does not contribute to the historic character of the Greenwood Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. Staff did issue an administrative permit to, earlier this month, to demolish this building. The applicant proposes to locate three structures on the additional parcel. The front setback of the infill oriented to West Eastland Avenue is proposed to have a setback, a front setback of 30 feet, which matches that, which was approved for the house at 907 West Eastland. Staff would recommend showing the front setback of the existing non-contributing structure to the left of the site, just so that front setback may be fully assessed. So to meet the guidelines, it would need to be, the, the new structure would need to be about halfway between the adjacent buildings. So the larger interior unit at the rear of the property, so we're moving to the rear, is to be set back 10 feet from the rear property line and zero feet from the right side property line. Staff finds that the setbacks could be appropriate in this case, since the right side elevation would be about five feet from that private interior drive. And since the property is to the rear of the site, so the properties that it backs up to that have frontage on Seymour are vacant lots that are owned by Metro, specifically the, the wastewater and Searo Division. I believe they're in the, possibly the 40-year buffer, so it's unlikely they are to be developed. So, and then the center unit, it would meet all of the, the current setbacks. And while it's not an outbuilding, size-wise, functionally, it kind of is similar to what the design guidelines would refer to as an outbuilding. So this is the proposed unit along West Eastland. It's one and a half stories with a massing that matches the unit that the commission previously approved at 907 West Eastland. Staff finds that the roof form is appropriate for the historic context and the, the dormers, as proposed, would meet the design guidelines. So here is the outbuilding. Again, it's not an outbuilding, but we reviewed it as such, and it would meet the design guidelines for an outbuilding in the Greenwood overlay with regard to ridge height, wall height, footprint, and so forth. And then the interior unit is larger, and it will have the same massing and roof form as the 11 previously approved interior units. It will be two stories with a gabled roof. So given that the building will not directly impact any adjacent block faces, as well as the distance of this, this unit from West Eastland Avenue, McFerrin, Seymour Avenue, any of those surrounding streets, it, it's unlikely to be very significantly visible from any public right-of-way. So in conclusion, staff would recommend approval of the amended SP with the conditions that the front setback of 903 West Eastland is shown on the site plan, so that that setback can be fully assessed. And that the applicant return to the commission after approval of the amended SP for review of materials, rhythm and proportion of windows and doors, utilities, and any other details that remain.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions to staff? Okay, not at the moment. Applicant?
Good afternoon. My name's Matt Sutton with Fairford Road Architecture. To start off, I just wanted to thank the staff for their help in guidance through the process of submitting this amendment. I think the description pretty well encompassed the project and our goals on it. And I wanted to leave the rest of my time for any questions or anything like that.
Thank you. Seeing no commissioner raise their hand, no questions at the moment. Okay? Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Commissioners?
Seems like a continuation of a good project that was previously approved. If no one has anything, I think I'll move regarding 930 McFerrin Avenue, move to a staff, staff recommendation.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Smith? Second by Commissioner Cashin. All in favor? Okay. There are, any opposed? Okay, there are four concurring votes, so that passes. Thank you. Thank you, applicant.
All right. The next case is 1814 Ordway Place. The application here is to construct a rear addition to a contributing house. The addition includes a ridge raise to the historic house as well. The house at 1814 Ordway is a circa 1932 bungalow-style house that contributes to the historic character of the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. The applicant recently went through the subdivision process with the Metro Planning Department to subdivide this lot into two lots. The subdivision has been approved by planning, but the plat has not yet been finalized or recorded with the Register of Deeds. While completing the subdivision in the future may impact any future outbuilding due to the change in lot area, it does not impact how an addition is reviewed. However, the applicant has stated that they no longer intend to move forward with the subdivision of the lot. The existing house is one and one-half stories tall. The applicant proposes a one and one-half story addition to the historic house with a ridge raise that staff finds meets the design guidelines for ridge raises. On this slide, the front and rear elevations are shown. The front is there on the top and the rear is on the bottom. You can see that ridge raise peeking up on the front elevation there. And here are the side elevations. The addition will also pick up a basement level at the rear of the lot due to the natural grade change of the site. Staff finds that the addition's roof, eve, and foundation height are compatible with the historic house. The addition's proposed 1,625 square foot footprint, more than doubles the 1,365 square foot footprint of the historic house. The guidelines state that the, the addition's footprints should not more than double the footprint of the historic building. Staff finds that the footprint should be reduced to meet this design guideline. Also, just to note here, the appropriate footprint for an addition is based on the historic house, not on the size of the lot. The existing lot extends all the way from the left side property line that's immediately adjacent to Lakehurst Drive, all the way over to the, the property line on the, the far right of the screen there. The potential future subdivided lot is indicated by the applicant on the site plan. The addition meets the base zoning setbacks of both the existing lot and of the future subdivided lot if the subdivision of the lot were to ever progress. But as mentioned, the applicant has stated that they no longer intend to move forward with the subdivision. Regardless of whether the lot is subdivided or not, staff finds that the footprint should not more than double the footprint of the historic house, since the footprint, the appropriate footprint is based on the size of the lot. I mean, on the size of the historic house, not on the size of the lot. The applicant also proposes a basement level garage on the new addition, which staff finds meets the design guidelines. Vehicular access to this garage will come from a new driveway from Lakehurst Drive at the rear of the lot, and that can be seen there at the bottom of the screen. The applicant indicates that the existing driveway will be removed. Driveways are not typically reviewed for additions in conservation overlays. However, in this case, the vehicular access requirements were part of the historic zoning reviews, historic zoning's review of the subdivision request. Staff finds that the proposed driveway meets the design guidelines. Staff recommends a condition, though, that the existing curb cut is fully removed when the existing driveway is removed. And you can see that existing curb cut at the top of the screen there. The applicant also intends to enlarge two existing windows on the west elevation, and staff finds that this alteration meets the design guidelines. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed rear addition with the following conditions listed there on the screen. I won't read through all of them, but conditions one and two are a little more unique. One is that the footprint of the addition should be reduced so that the footprint is not more than double the footprint of the historic house. And then two is that condition about the curb cut, that it's fully removed when the existing driveway is removed. And then three through eight, there are more standard conditions that you're familiar with, so I won't read through those. And with those conditions, staff finds that it meets the design guidelines and happy to take questions. The applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Joseph.
One quick question. What's the, you said it and I didn't hear it. The, what's the existing and the new footprint?
Yeah. The addition's footprint is 1,625 square feet, and the existing footprint is 1,365 square feet.
Thank you.
Okay.
Press the red button.
You're good.
It's good. I'm alone, I'm live. Good afternoon. I'm Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects. Thanks for having us. Thanks, Joseph, for a good overview. Can you go back to the site plan? So I'm, I'm excited to be here on behalf of 1814 Ordway Place. I'm going to pass around some renderings because we didn't have that when we, but we have those now. So this is a very unusual piece of property. And our clients, who, Andrew and Claire, will talk a little bit more about the property in a moment, and, and their sort of process to have gotten to where we are. But an interesting addition to, to an interesting house. The, there are a couple of things about this house that make this addition a little bit interesting. There's a lot of grade on this lot. The house has very low ceilings. And the thing that everyone loves the most about it, and the thing, the reason we're sort of here today is we want to sort of maintain this wonderful green space and look at this as one parcel. And, you know, we want to have a reasonable number of steps down to that sort of beautiful green space. I think the rendering does a good job of sort of illustrating that. So we have kind of a split-level design here to help us get to that grade, which is, which sort of confounds some of the footprint issues. The actual heated and cooled square footage of that footprint is 1,360. We're really asking for 19% more. That is literally the porch, which is really the, one of the most important things about this elevation is this outdoor space that the client requested that'll really make this connection to this green space. And so the placement of the addition is obviously a bit narrower than the house itself. We've, we've tucked it in and, and tried to make it very subservient in terms of width. It's a little bit deeper. But we're sort of committed this full piece of property. As you can see, our terrace spaces already sort of extend across that, where that property line was going to be. Andrew's studio will be on the adjacent piece of property. The driveway that we're, the new drive that will sort of take this big diagonal drive out of the center of this property and give us more green space is running across this, this other parcel. So I think we've always thought of it as sort of one big piece. This lot is 26,186 square feet. This is an R6 zone neighborhood. This lot is 336% greater than the base zone. So I just don't feel like asking for a 275 additional footprint is a big ask when you're 336% over. We've been up here before and asked for these. I mean, some relatively recent. Probably about a year and a half ago, we had a project at 1806 Cedar that was 124% over. And y'all were kind to grant us that. That project is in a construction. Three or four years ago, we asked for, at 1725, we asked for a percentage over at 1725 Linden, which you gave us. But even more recently, within, less than a year ago, you gave us 120% across the street from our office at 1617 16th Avenue. All these are oversized lots. They're oversized lots as in 10,000 square foot oversized lots, not 26,000 square foot oversized lots. So we're really wanting to build this sort of great family home on this property. And like I said, the grade presents a couple of design challenges in terms of, you know, more often than not, you're sort of blending old and new and moving walls. We literally have to build the addition on different levels than the existing house just to get the volume to work and create what we think would be a nice sort of access to the garden from these new primary living rooms. So to grow over that again, like I said, this is a very simple footprint. It had no existing additions. Most houses have had something tacked onto them, some covered porch, some, something that sort of adds to their base footprint. This house has zero. So it's the existing 1932 1,300 square foot footprint. The low ceilings certainly accentuate our ability to have more footprint because we can't really sort of blend between old and new. can't really sort of blend between old and new very well. The split level and the number of steps was a critical component because that garden and that additional space is a real sort of, that is the real sort of asset to this property. And all of those spaces having those views to that garden space. And I said, going back to, we're 26,186 square feet and 336 above percent over the base zone. And I'm going to let Andrew and Claire talk for a moment. Unless you'll have some more questions for me.
I do have one question before.
Yes, Melanie.
So you mentioned the roof, or porch is the additional.
The porch is actually 275 square feet of that footprint. It'll be the first time this house has ever had a back porch that sort of faced the pretty side of the property.
And it's under roof?
It's under roof, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And you can see it in the rendering. It's a little bit more obvious, I think, in the rendering than it actually probably is in the site plan. But that's really where our additional square footage wants to be. It's right there. We've got a lot of rooms that sort of open to that, and that'll sort of get us down into that garden space.
Do I see a utility easement on the back of the property as well? Does that extend?
It's all the way across the back, which is part of the reason the drive is in that. This, that's another sort of interesting point to bring up about the subdivision part of it. I'd looked at this with other folks. I looked at it as a subdivided piece of property. There are easements all over that thing. You know, there used to be a lake here. It's not called Lake Hurst. Accident. There was a lake.
And the property of the house actually bought it up to the Lake Hurst Drive.
Yeah. So anyway, there is a utility easement down the back. There are sewer easements that crisscross it. So I think its, its greatest value is the green space that it is today. I don't think it, for the other client that was looking at it, didn't make a very developable piece of property after all. But I think that the Roberts really sort of appreciate the, the way it sort of, you can enjoy and appreciate it today, minus that driveway that crosses, that slashes through the middle of it. But you can see their existing terraces and all, I mean, they literally are on the other side of where that property line would be. So if we split this off, in half of what we're doing there, we'd have to give up or give away, and that's certainly not our intention.
Just to speak, just to speak to that, when we originally purchased the property.
Y'all go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Yes, please do.
I'm Claire DeRoberts. This is my husband, Andrew.
You guys.
Hello.
Just for background, I've been in love with this property since I first visited in 2013. When the property came on the market last year, we jumped at the chance to purchase it and make it our forever home. When we initially bought the property, we planned to build a little Hollywood-style home. You guys know the kind of, the lovely style that's there, while keeping the existing house as part of our property for my husband to work out of. To do this, we were advised by the Metro Historic staff that a subdivision was necessary in order to spread those, split those into two separate lots. So we began that process. But after living on the property, we realized that our original plan would take away what drew us to the land in the first place, the beautiful garden and the nature that it brings to it. So we pivoted to our current plan, which you have reviewed. And while the subdivision was approved, as Michael mentioned, by planning, we have not and do not plan to subdivide, to subdivide the property moving forward. We even went to ask our surveyor, who handled the process for us, if there was anything we could do to stop the subdivision process so it made for clear, and they said it would just need to be, just need to wait for the one-year mark. So we have letters? So we have letters from our neighbors that are on either side of us, in addition to the former owners who were very lucky, trust us, be the stewards of this property. They told us when talking about this, they had received higher offers than ours to purchase the lot and basically would subdivide it, and that is not something that we would ever want to do. So. There's eight of them here, so I don't know if you have them.
I think I only had five.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot.
Right.
Totally.
But duly noted, we have public comment on SharePoint, so our commissioners have read it.
Wonderful.
Just so, just so you're assured.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we love this place. We love East Nashville. We're trying to make this a forever home for our family and Claire's parents, who are getting older. There's a space in this new house for them to live with us so we can take care of them as they get older. Our kids, who run around our neighborhood all the time, they love this yard, and we're trying to keep this lot together and try to build a place for them where they can be wild outside kids. And as Michael said, the, the footprint of this house is really a function of the terrain that we're working with, and we're, we're really just asking for the screen and porch to be allowed as a variance on top of the usual 100% addition. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Duly noted. Okay. You'll have a minute if there's any other rebuttal. Okay? I will open public hearing? Please.
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you for being here today. My name is Laura Poy. I am a neighbor. I just had three questions about the proposal.
And so would those three questions be to the applicant or to us as a commission?
To the applicant.
Okay. We may not be able to answer that because this is public hearing, so we are not the applicant. We are the commission that would decide, so just be clear.
So they're comments, I guess, but they're in the form of a question. Sure. P like Peter, O-Y-E. How many large and ecologically important trees will be removed to create the new driveway? And then what contingencies or procedures are in place to ensure that it won't increase the storm water runoff or flooding, both of which currently impact that area? And does moving the utilities to the back impact those ecologically important and very large trees? Because when you look at that plan, there's about at least three trees that are really big, really old, that I would think you'd have to take out in order to have the driveway. So that's just my comments. Thank you.
All right, just to address your comments, so that is Metro Historic zoning is, that's not our purview, so I would suggest that, that conversation be with the applicant and the architect. How about that? Okay, very good. Anyone else? Those are good, good questions as well, too, just so you know that. I haven't closed public hearing yet. Anyone else? So I make sure, because legal always wants me to be sure I close public hearing. I'm closing public hearing.
And did, was there rebuttal?
Yeah, rebuttal, rebuttal, sorry. I, oops. Can we reopen public hearing? I think I have to have a motion, right? Since I already did, or you could?
Yeah, I think you can just reopen.
Okay, good. We're just reopening public hearing because I just snapped. Go, I just saw your hand. Come, come forward, please.
Hey, it's Andrew DeRoberts again, Ms. Poy. Oh, okay. Well, we, we actually shared a lot of her concerns, especially regarding the trees. My uncle is a landscaper and is a bit of what I think you would call an old-school landscaper. He, he can tell tree varieties by tasting the leaves, which is
Wow.
a unique skill, I guess. Some of the biggest trees in the back of the lot that Ms. Poy mentioned are actually silver maples, which are actually an invasive species. And not only are they invasive, which makes them complicated to have in Tennessee, but they have a wide and shallow root system, which actually makes it harder for native trees to get the nutrients that they need because they suck up so many nutrients and so much water from all across the property. There is one silver maple in particular that could get removed. Throughout the property, there are a few native trees that have actually been damaged by these silver maples being on the property. There are a few conifers that might be removed in this process. However, at least one of these conifers is dead because the silver maple is taking its resources. And conifers can regrow quite easily. We've also worked with our neighbors behind us
Okay.
who are going to replant some of the trees.
Thank you for wrapping up. Yes, and thank you for the learning moment. Okay, now close public hearing. Commissioners? Again, just to clarify, Joseph, so the difference of square footage is how much, please?
So the addition is 1625 and the existing is 1,365.
Okay, very good. And the porch under roof is 275, just clarity.
What's the historic setback on the garages? Because this contains a garage.
There is an attached basement-level garage there, and it's, it's over 20 feet from the rear property line there, so.
If it was detached, what would the, so, back setback be?
A detached outbuilding at five feet from side and rear property lines.
I guess what I'm getting at is they could have a separate garage here without that easement. Probably have enough room to even have the 20-foot in between. But they don't because of the utility easement. That's, that, if you were looking to approve this, I could see a hardship being created by that utility easement that otherwise would let them, let them have, have a 260-foot smaller footprint there and a detached garage. That's stretching it probably. Otherwise, I, I want to, I want to listen to discussion.
First pass with me is I'm inclined to, I think it was a compelling argument. You know, the overage on the square footage is the porch. It is a bit, you know, of a, of a landscape that you have to deal with. They are keeping, you know, the green space. So that's, that's my first thought.
I think what I'm about to say is way out of our purview. I just want to make sure. I mean, there's no way to, I mean, obviously, because the lot size is so big, I think there's a really compelling argument to allow this. But that's because they're not subdividing the lot. So I guess my question to legal is there's nothing to prevent them in the future from subdividing the lot, right?
I mean, they could. I mean, that's something that is in line with what planning allows, that they meet, you know, all the subdivision regulations.
So it has been subdivided, you're saying?
It sounds like it's, it's been subdivided, but the plat has not been recorded.
Okay.
Which makes it official, but apparently with a plat recording, it would become two lots. I think the intention of the applicant, as stated, was to let that expire.
In a year.
In, in a year is, is what I heard, which, which sounds right.
Okay.
I don't think there's any legal mechanism to
Right.
keep them at that.
Right.
Which.
Right.
But that issue isn't before you and
Right.
doesn't come into your calculus.
Right. But, right, I just wanted to get it out there.
Put your, thank you, sir.
I was compelled by the applicant's arguments, especially in light of some of the examples that they cited before. And I think I was only here for one of them, but I do remember us having conversations about porches and how we would include them in, in the footprint. So I'm inclined to support their petition.
Okay. You know, the other thing, too, it is one and one-half story. Is that right? It's not a full-toothed story. And, you know, looking at the, this, this helps a lot. We love these. We're such visual. That, you know, it looks like a reasonable, in terms of rhythm and spacing and massing and scaling, that kind of thing. That's just my opinion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, well, when you do that, Commissioner, because it is out of the guidelines, just make really clear why and the reasons so that it doesn't come back to us to haunt us. I think you'll do a good job. Okay, I'm just, just going to say that.
I almost, I almost abandoned the motion. Regarding the 1814 Ordway Place, I move to accept, stacked for recommendation, the proposed rear addition with all of the conditions excluding condition one. Would that basically do it? Due to a extremely large lot size, a appropriate rhythm, spacing concerns, and the meeting of every other criteria that we see here, and the multiple utility and sewer easements that are on the property, which restrict the setbacks even further.
Okay, there is a motion by Commissioner Smith. Okay, Commissioner Williams has seconded it. Is there any other discussion before we make the motion? Okay. Motion's on the table. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that is four concurring votes, and that passes. We appreciate your motivation for this vote.
Okay, up next is an application for infill at 1806 Sweetbrier. Staff has issued a demolition permit for the non-contributing house on this lot. Here are some typical historic houses in the immediate context. Staff finds that the proposed one-and-a-half-story infill is appropriate to the context in terms of height, width, form, and massing. The roof form, orientation, and rhythm of spacing of openings are all appropriate. Staff recommends that the final materials be approved by MHCC prior to purchase and installation. The front setback will be halfway between the houses to either side, and the rear and side setbacks of the primary structure will meet base zoning. Staff recommends approval of the proposed infill with standard conditions seen here on the screen. The applicant is here, also available for questions.
Okay, that was succinct. Okay. Applicant?
The applicant may have just left. It was Mr. Ward.
Oh, okay.
I think they felt good about this one.
All right. Are you the applicant, Mr. Ward? Okay. We waited for you.
You've done it before, I think. No, thank you, Jenny. This was a fun one. We, we've got a couple of these on Sweetbrier. It's been fascinating to watch our neighborhood shift to the west in these, these new homes. But we wanted to do something kind of fun with a little sort of colonial revival vibe, and given the height restrictions, it was challenging. These are really challenging lots, too. If you think the sewer easements are fun on Ordway, they get really interesting back here, too. So there's a lot of excavation. Frankly, there's a lot of excavation to make your height restrictions work. We have to dig halfway to, to the other end of the world to get this house low enough to meet, you know, those restrictions. So it's a lot of, a lot of landmark to do. Any questions you have, I'm happy to answer.
Applicant, you're good with the recommendation? Applicant, you're good with the recommendation?
As long as that sort of works with what we submitted, yes.
Sounds like. Okay. We'll take that. We'll take that as a yes. Okay. All right, open public hearing. Close public hearing? Commissioners?
This looks pretty open and shut to me, so if anyone doesn't have any comments. With respect to eighteen oh six Sweetbrier Avenue, I move that we accept staff recommendations.
Motion by Commissioner Cashin? Second by Commissioner Cotton. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, four, four concurring votes, passes. Thank you.
Okay, next is an application for infill in an outbuilding at fourteen nineteen Boscoval Street. Staff has issued a demolition permit for the non-contributing house on this lot. These are examples of historic houses in the immediate context. Staff finds the proposed one-and-a-half-story infill is appropriate to the context in terms of height, width, form, and massing. The roof form, orientation, and rhythm and spacing of openings are all appropriate. Staff recommends the final materials be approved by MHCC prior to purchase and installation. You foresee some public comment regarding the proximity to the house next door, so I wanted to address that briefly. The applicant is proposing to cite the house slightly shifted on the lot to meet base zoning. So there'll be a ten-foot setback on the street side and a five-foot setback on the interior right side. The house next door, which dates to two thousand and seven, prior to the Everlake setting to this block, is also shifted on its lot, so it has a five-foot minimum required setback along the adjoining property line and fifteen feet along the right side, which creates space for a driveway for that, um, that house on that lot. That'll meet space zoning, that's fine, but it means the two houses are kind of shifted towards each other. They both have the minimum five-foot side setbacks, so they're both about ten feet apart total. This is fairly common throughout the wider neighborhood to have about ten feet between houses. And here, it's the result of existing conditions, minimum setback requirements, and the house width. The front setback is going to align with the houses to the right, and the rear setback of the primary structure will meet base zoning. A new driveway from Boscoval Street is proposed to be twenty-four feet wide. The guidelines call for driveway width to be limited to twelve feet, but given the lack of a rear alley, staff found that the proposed width could be appropriate here because it allows for access to a two-car garage that wouldn't be allowed otherwise. The proposed outbuilding meets all the requirements for ridge and eve heights, dormers, and add-ons. The applicant is proposing to locate the garage thirteen feet nine inches from the side property line along Boscoval Street. The guidelines call for a twenty-foot side street setback when garage doors face the street. Staff finds a proposed distance could be appropriate here as the property is a full ten feet from the edge of the asphalt, meaning the garage will actually sit about twenty-four feet from the street itself. The rear of this lot abuts the side property line. It's an unusual situation here. There's no alley separating the two properties, and in such cases, the guidelines require that the rear setback be a minimum of ten feet. The intent of this guideline is to create additional space between the rear of a garage on one lot and the front side elevation of a house next door. However, in this particular case, the lot next door at fourteen fifteen Boscoval is owned by Metro Water and has a deed restriction stating that no dwelling may ever be constructed on the lot. Given this, staff finds a standard five-foot rear setback would be appropriate here. Staff recommends approval of the proposed infill and outbuilding with standard conditions seen here on the screen. I know it's a little complicated. Happy to answer questions. The applicant is here as well.
We're thinking about it, Jenny. Applicant?
Good afternoon. I'm Cheyenne Smith. I'm the designer of record. The owner couldn't be here, but thanks to Jenny and the rest of the staff for making all these exceptions, given the unique nature of the lot, uh, especially the DADU and the Metro-owned lot behind it. We're in agreement with everything regarding the public comment thus far. Yeah, I mean, we're within the setbacks. The owner doesn't care where the house sits, as long as we can get the volume on the lot. But, I mean, we're as close as we can be to the side street because it's a corner lot and, um, yeah. So any other questions, I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, open public hearing? And again, we note the public comments on SharePoint? No other public hearing? Okay, no other comments. Well, I'll close public hearing? Okay? Jenny, that was a mouthful. But basically, every, all the setbacks are within base zoning and within our purview.
They're all within your purview, yes.
Haven't been very quiet in this meeting. I think a lot of time, we're more lenient than staff, and I think, I think their reasoning is solid. Seems like the only two issues are a five-foot setback on a deed-restricted lot, I said ten, and a side setback that seems like in reality will be met, and then some. At least from, from the, I said, from the asphalt. I'm inclined to support staff's recommendation.
Deli noted?
So it seems like the majority, we had several emailed comments about this one, just seemed to be about the distance between the neighboring house and this house. I mean, it meets base zoning setbacks, so I just wanted to acknowledge that there were neighborhood concerns about the, you know.
I think ten is, is a little short, uh, but it meets the zoning. It happened all organically and legally. And, you know, I don't know what the historic, you know, length between them is, but that it's just a reality of the ground. I guess I just finished some in Green Hill that are six feet apart.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I'm less than ten, I mean, I'm a historic overlay, and I'm probably less than ten feet from my neighbor, but, um, I don't have a problem with it. It was just kind of, you know, just wanted to at least mention that we kind of talked about it and acknowledged the concern. And it's a pacing thing, right? Guideline-wise, it's more of a...
Rhythm of spacing, we call it.
Rhythm of spacing, right, okay.
And it is within context of the neighborhood.
Well, that was what the neighbors were saying, is that they find in that immediate context, it tends to be a little bit more. But I think you do find throughout the larger neighborhood, there, as, as Commissioner Cotton said, there are plenty of examples of houses that are as close as ten feet historically.
Yeah.
Six foot three on each side.
Yeah, again, I think I'm comfortable with it. I just wanted to, you know, bring it up.
I mean, you know, we do have public comments that, that come like this, and we appreciate that because it means that the neighborhood is watching, um, which is good. It, it's appropriate. But I think our purview is when it falls in line with what we have approved in the past, within base zoning, within our, our purview, you know, every site is specific. So we do look at that, so just, I just want to have that as public comment.
Well, and this is a corner lot, so the setbacks on the other side are a little more complicated than if it were interior lawn to your sound.
Right, and there's no alley, so there's some of that, that it's not accessible. Commissioner Cashin, you have any comment?
No, I have no, I have no problem with it. I thought it was well documented.
Okay, Commissioner Williams?
I have no comment. I'm in support of staff recommendations.
Okay, just want to make sure we're all in it. Okay?
As regards to fourteen nineteen Boscoval Street, I move that we accept, uh, staff recommendations for this property.
Okay, Commissioner, okay, Commissioner Cotton has made the motion, Commissioner Smith has made a second, all in favor? Seeing none, opposed, there's four concurring votes, and that motion passes. Thank you.
Do you feel like it's a way you can do it out images? Because we, Monday, when we're plugging in our computers rather than theirs, this room's, it hasn't been working.
Thanks for your patience. We're just trying to pull the, um, project up. While they're looking, is the applicant here? Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, so this project was removed from the consent agenda, and I believe you received some written comments from the neighbors, so, um, this is for twenty-nine oh one Belmont Boulevard, which is a Circuit nineteen fourteen bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. So with this project, there is some demo proposed to a rear portion that, um, that, that has been altered, uh, so its removal can be appropriate. There are also some proposed changes to window openings on the side elevations near the rear, which also meet the design guidelines. So the proposed addition is located at the rear of the house. It does extend wider on the left side. A wider rear addition can meet the design guidelines in this case, since the house has shifted significantly to one side of the lot. And also, this is a pretty wide lot. It has about a hundred feet of frontage along Belmont Boulevard. The proposed addition meets all setbacks. Uh, no change is proposed to vehicular access with this application. There is an existing stone wall along the rear property line. It, it's shown on the site plan, and the applicant intends to retain that wall. So here's the proposed front elevation. The new construction is a one-and-a-half-story addition to a one-and-a-half-story house. It extends wider, as you can see here on the left side, um, that the additional width is no more than fifty percent of the width of the house. And as proposed, the addition is no taller than the historic house. So here we see the side elevations. The top is the right elevation, which also faces Cedar Lane, since this is a corner lot. The bottom photo is the interior left side elevation. The upper-level portion that you see on the bottom photo, that appears to be a long dormer, is actually inset approximately seven and a half feet, eight, or seven and a half to eight feet from that, um, that side gable of the historic house, which is consistent with, um, projects that have been previously approved by the commission. Here is the rear elevation. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the addition with standard conditions regarding utility location and, um, final review of materials. The applicant is here.
Good afternoon. Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects. Thanks, Melissa. So, you know, we're fortunate to be able to be involved in special projects like this. And this is certainly a very special house in the neighborhood. It's one of the true, true bungalows. And it sits on this really amazing piece of property. We're excited to be working, uh, with Dream Inc. on it. I mean, they've worked on some of the most sort of classic and iconic neighborhood houses. They renovated twenty-six sixteen Belmont Boulevard, which is the only sort of prairie house in the neighborhood they did a block away. So I think Joe and his team will do a great job. We tried to be super sensitive to this, that, as Melissa pointed out, that north elevation, that street elevation is very critical to us. We pushed everything back. We didn't really work within the insets that you gave us. I really wanted to pull that back. I wanted that form to be pure. I wanted it to sort of match the other form as much as possible, but be recessed back from it. You can see in that drawing too how extreme this grade is. So once again, we're, you know, digging a hole, uh, to build it, but it will keep us down. It'll keep those roof lines, I think, where y'all want them. We didn't want to go taller on this. We really wanted to keep it low, and we really wanted to maintain as much of these site features as we could. I think there's been some concern about the stone wall in the back. The stone wall is in excellent condition. Apparently, it's been sort of rebuilt and tuck-pointed in relatively recent history. And there's a, a tree that, uh, it's a well-known neighborhood tree that thankfully is adjacent to said wall. And that clearly are on our site plan and is not disturbed. There's a, a risk that the, uh, the southern far end of that wall, we might have to cut a couple of feet off of it to, uh, to get the garage and the parking to work. But the majority of that wall would remain, and we would rather not take it out. We have had to clear the site. I think all the clearing is complete. I don't think we'll be taking anything else out. But there was a lot of, it's been in the family for a long time. There's a lot of growth. And as someone who's been planting on a site for thirty years, at a certain point, it's non-sustainable, and this had kind of gotten past that point. So a lot of things were taken out that I think a lot of folks were enthralled with, but, you know, there was a cedar that was literally growing under the house, uh, the porch. And there's some pretty extreme, and we've met on site and looked at some pretty extreme structural damage to this house, part of which landscaping and some trees were partly culprit. So those invasive ones are now gone, and I think Joe can sort of focus on the stabilization and sort of reconstruction of some of those foundation features. But I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Okay, anyone else on your team? No? Good, okay. Open public hearing. And we thank you for waiting to the last, last project.
Madam Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Joseph Johnston. My wife and I live at twenty-eight fifteen Belmont Boulevard. Our next-door neighbor across the alley, Mr. Keith Grant, lives at sixteen oh six, uh, Cedar Lane. We have no opposition to the project as proposed. Our concern was mainly to put on the record our concern about maintaining this wall. Uh, it has been damaged from time to time over the several years by construction trucks coming in, backing into it. Pieces of the wall have been reconstructed and repaired. But the wall itself, as, as we try to demonstrate in the photographs we submitted with our, uh, submission here, really adds to the character of, of the neighborhood. And if you'll look at the handout, this is the specimen tree that, uh, the applicant was referring to, and it is a magnificent tree. It's enhanced by the wall. If you look, it really does add to the neighborhood. The second picture is a picture of the wall all along the alleyway. And you can see the wall itself has And you can see the wall itself has a structure in the middle of it that is quite interesting here. I'm not sure of the historical significance of this, but it's been in the neighborhood. We've been in the neighborhood since 1988, uh, and it was there long before that. The, uh, the last picture, of course, is a close-up of that structure, and there's some, uh, some kind of, 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 um, model or, or sculpture enclosed in there. Finally, our concern is the drawing itself points out the wall, but it says it's a two-foot wall. It's not a two-foot wall, it's between four feet and six feet. That may be just a drafting error, but, uh, we would not like to see the lot, the wall reduced in size. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. I have a question to s, well, I'll, I'll hold my question. I'll hold my question because it's really to staff and not, not to the applicant. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Marcy Jamison, and I live adjacent to the property. And I'm just supporting the fact that we love this wall, and I just have a little letter for exhibit to make the case, and that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you for being here, we appreciate your interest. Yes, Ms. Ziegler put that in. Anyone else? Just want to make sure that since this is our last project, that everyone has a chance to voice their opinions. Okay? Close public hearing. Question to staff. Melissa, you can answer this, or Robin? Is this wall within our purview as, you know, fencing and all that that we normally do?
It is not in this neighborhood.
Okay, but some we do, right?
In the historic preservation overlays you would, but not in the neighborhood conservation.
Okay. Historic preservation overlay, yes. Neighborhood conservation overlay, no. Good, yeah, because I know we've reviewed some fencing and lighting and that sort. Fencing particularly is under our purview when it's under a historic preservation overlay? Versus a neighborhood conservation overlay? Yeah. Another learning moment. Okay. Discussion? And we do appreciate the neighborhood bringing that up, just, just want you to know because it's beautiful fence, uh, wall, stone, hand-laid stone wall. Looks like it's dry, dry stack, maybe. Nope, not dry stack. Right, okay. Discussion?
Seems like the wall is, uh, gonna be intact. Not really in our purview, anyway, it looks like. And I think the project meets, uh, the rest of the guidelines. And, all right, in regards to 2901 Belmont Boulevard, I move to accept staff's, accept staff's recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Smith. Second, second by Commissioner Cashin, all in favor? I hear and see none opposed, so that is four concurring votes, and that motion passes. So, there you have it. Okay? Thank you, everyone. Robin, is there anything else we need to discuss today?
Just a Happy Holidays.
Oh, right, yes, I do want to say that, too. Just as Chair courtesy, I do want to publicly thank the staff. This is our last meeting of 2024, and, um, we know that you all work so hard to bring us your recommendations and just the work that you do with, um, the applicants and contractors, because it, it's really hard to, to navigate all of that. And even sometimes if we have a short agenda, there's lots going on in the background. We see the permits that are, uh, have been, um, reviewed and approved, or not approved. So, just want to thank the staff. Ms. Ziegler, thank you for your leadership. We also want to thank, um, Ann Mickelson for our legal, because we, we couldn't do it without you. I want to thank personally all the commissioners because it takes, it takes us, and it takes us as a commission to make the best decisions that we can make. So, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Cashin, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Cotton, Commissioner Mayhall, Commissioner Price, Commissioner Mosley, and Vice Chair Stewart. So, if you hear this at some point, I thank you personally. So, Happy Holidays, Merry Merry, and all the greetings. And we are adjourned.